We'll be handling the meeting. Call or roll, please.
Councilmember Brightcruz, here. Councilmember McKay, here. Councilmember Jablonsky, here. Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly, here. Mayor Nelson, here.
We're having technical issues.
Which phone is he on? Call him back on his own. Yeah.
You hear me, Jeff?
Yes, I can. I can hear you.
Thank you.
I can hear you, Freddie. Thanks.
All right. We're going to do the pledge of allegiance to the flag, please.
United States of America, and new republic, with its stand, one...
All right. All right. First thing on the agenda, we're going to turn it over to Marty.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. For the record, my name is Martin Sherwood, your town financial administrator. Tonight, before I formally introduce Bela Sherman, CPA and director, who is here from the independent accounting firm of Markham LLP, I am pleased to provide you all and the residents of the town the comprehensive annual financial report, otherwise known as the CAFER, for the fiscal year ended 2014. Mr. Mayor, can you hear me? Testing. Can you hear me over the phone?
Yes, Marty, I can hear you.
Okay, wonderful. Let me continue. The town's fiscal 2014 CAFER is the eighth consecutive CAFER prepared since 2007 and the ninth overall since the town's inception. Now, I have copies. There's a couple of copies right now up by the town clerk. We have three copies up by Bela, if anyone would like to review it. It will be available on the website tomorrow after it gets approved by council. And we'll also provide copies at town hall should anyone need a copy. A few key favorable financial highlights that I wish to report are: First is the independent auditor's report, which Bela will elaborate more on later during her presentation, which reflects an unmodified, which is also known as a clean audit opinion. And the clean audit opinion is the highest assurance given that the town's financial statements were prepared in conformity with general accepted accounting principles. Second key favorable highlight is the town's assets that exceed its liabilities by over $50 million, specifically $50,584,707. And this analysis is comparable to a balance sheet in the private sector. And obviously, we are in a surplus net position overall. During fiscal year 2014, I would like to congratulate and acknowledge all town staff who finished the year in a fiscally responsible manner that created net position increases in both the total of all the town's governmental funds in the amount of $439,633, as well as our solid waste fund in the amount of $102,495. It's important to note that this is the fourth consecutive year of positive net position increases in both funds. I would like to put on a monitor, a graph. This is the graph of page 67 in the CAFER. It's also in the agenda on page 94, if anyone would like to refer to the agenda of this graph. And you will see the past four years, three of which Andy and I have been your town financial administrator, town administrator. You will see growth in the changes in the fund balance overall for the governmental funds. This is governmental funds only. There's also been growth in the solid waste fund as well. The third thing is, thank you, Russell. You could leave it up in case anyone has any questions on that. The unassigned fund balance, which is otherwise known as reserves for the general fund, increased $372,269 to $3,830,892 and represents 41% of total general fund expenditures and transfers. Therefore, the town continues to far exceed the minimum unassigned fund balance standard as recommended by the Governmental Finance Officers Association of up to 15%. That's right. If you're following me, the recommendation is up to 15% and we have 41%. Fourth component is we also have a new but restricted fund balance in the amount of $128,291 for fire control purposes. And that is also established within the general fund. Finally, we are proud to report for the second straight fiscal year that the independent auditor's report on internal controls and the management letter in accordance with the rules of the Auditor General of the state of Florida identified no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls. Well, that's it for my presentation. Now, let me introduce and welcome your next presenter from Markham LLP. Bela Sherman has more than 20 years of experience providing accounting, auditing, and advisory services for a wide range of entities, including municipal governments. As a CPA and director in Markham's LLP's Assurance Division, her primary responsibilities include onsite supervision and review of audit engagements to ensure they are prepared in accordance with professional and firm standards. Ms. Sherman provides guidance to clients ranging from complex accounting issues to general business and accounting developments. She also has significant experience in the evaluation of internal controls, which may I add, we have no material deficiencies at all. So with that in mind, I'd like to turn it over to Bela.
Thank you. Marty said a lot of the things that I would also have mentioned. I'm not going to mention them again. The CAFER is actually prepared by your finance department. We have the two pages that are our audit report, which he already told you had an unmodified, which is a clean opinion, which is great. But the rest of it, they actually prepare and then we audit it. So they put in enormous amount of work and I think it's quite beautiful with all those pictures that you have in there, besides the numbers. One of the things I just wanted to mention when you're talking about the statement of net position, which was on page 15, and we're talking about that's assets minus liabilities. And last year, I know we talked about they added deferred inflows and outflows just to make it more complicated. But there's a caption in there that's called "non-spendable", which is really important to note because it's non-cash. And that's really calculated by saying, what have you invested in capital assets? And what is the debt related to capital assets? And it will come to that 44619 number that is showing up on page 15. So I just wanted to mention that to you. So Marty had already talked about the results. And one of the things, last year, I know that there was a lot of changes in formatting and audit reports and all of those things. We don't have that this year. The one GASB that has everybody thinking about is GASB 67, which was pensions defined benefit plans. But your pension doesn't fall under that, so you didn't have the issues with that this year. And the Auditor General of the state of Florida has said that they needed to have a report on how you handled your investments. So you'll find that there's an additional report, that's an accountant's report, on the compliance with that. And again, there were no issues with that report. One of the things that we do is we also report, I think you'd have a copy of the, what we call the communications to those charged with governance. And it just talks about the audit in the current year. And the fact that we encountered no difficulties, you know, the staff was incredibly helpful. And so we really appreciated that. There were no uncorrected misstatements in these financial statements that you have. There are no disagreements with management. There was no consultation. They didn't need, you know, to go looking for somebody else to say, how do we handle this position? There were no audit findings or other matters. And so it was a positive experience on both sides. And I thank you.
Thank you, Bela. At this time, Mr. Vice Mayor, it is recommended that the town council introduce then accept via a motion the comprehensive annual financial report as audited by our independent external auditors, Markham LLP CPAs, for the fiscal year ended September 30, 2014, including the communications to those charged with governance letter dated March 6, 2015.
Make a motion to approve.
Any councilmembers have any statement?
Second.
He made a motion to approve.
Yeah, I'd just make a comment that, you know, exceptional job. Very well done. Appreciate all the hard work. I know, Marty, all the work that you and your team put in it. But I know it's a team effort, you know, under Andy and on all the departments. And they all get and do their part and provide their part to it. So it's a real team effort. It's a real accomplishment to do this, you know, eight years in a row. And just the amount of effort, we'll never realize the amount of effort that goes in there, but we thank you for it anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you, Freddie, as mayor. This is really, really a good position to be in where basically there's no comments, no bad news. You know, no news is good news kind of thing. Nothing out of the ordinary, nothing irregular. You know, you could have seen us 10 years ago, it would have been a different opinion. But, you know, so we thank you very much for your services.
How about you, Jeff?
Yeah, Freddie, just very, very proud, quite frankly. Just to add a little bit more with regards to Marty and his staff, except, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Exceptional job to the town staff, to you, Vice Mayor, and the rest of the council members for doing such a great job to ensure that the residents' funds are invested and used in a very appropriate way. And also to continue to provide a high level of service. And, you know, to the residents, yes, something that we should all be proud of. Getting confirmation of the $370,000 increase in return and almost $4 million total is, you know, with the garden through difficult times, it's something that I know we're all very proud of. So congratulations to the team. Congratulations, council. And just a wonderful, wonderful year. Something we're all very, very proud of.
Thank you, Jeff. I want to just repeat what he said. Marty, you know, ever since you've been here, it's been good. We haven't had any problems and I appreciate everything you've been doing. Anybody up there?
I'd just say you guys do a bang-up job as always, and we're very grateful to have you all. So thanks very much and awesome to the entire staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Item number four.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, can we call the roll on this one?
Pardon?
Can we call the roll on this one?
A motion.
We did call the roll.
No, we didn't.
We just did a motion in a second.
Okay. Not on this item. Yeah, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Brightcruz?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Okay. Next item will be item four, public comments. Before we go in that, is there anybody in the audience that hasn't been to one of our meetings before? Otherwise, I don't think we have to show you the rules. Okay, then we'll open it up to public comment.
Vice Mayor, we only have one tonight. It's, it looks like we have two. We have Vince Valetta followed by Bob Hartman, and that will be it for tonight.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council, Vince Valetta, Sunshine Ranches, Southwest Ranches. This thing is a little nervous. In any case, I would like to take the opportunity to thank our town administrator and his staff for coming out with the ancient history, which is in the vestibule that you could review, which was the precursor to our town, both by zoning, land use, and other things, and community affairs. But I'm glad that the administrator and his staff have begun to put that out. And I hope that the town has a good opportunity to review them. We have in Sunshine Ranches a new president. Her name is Annie Chang. Lovely lady, well-qualified. And we hope to be going forward in the next year with several projects. And I'm sorry she's not here this evening to greet you, but she will be here at other occasions. In my phone calls to our residents, it came up that the question was put to me is, what happened to our guns? And that's the question that says, I can't answer that because we bought the guns for the town and not any particular law enforcement office, but for the town and for the town to distribute it to our law enforcement officers that do take care of us. And with that, I will say thank you for listening and have a good evening.
Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 188th, Doris. Mr. Vice Mayor, I beg to disagree about whether the public speaks on the CAFER. I've been coming to these meetings regularly since 2002, and I've been commenting on it regularly, annually, since 2004. If you remember those days, we had auditors quit on us. We had auditors cry in the offices on us. All the way up into, what, 2007? That's when things finally got starting out. And, you know, for the last six, seven years, I get up here to read two aspects. I wait for this report. Under disagreements with management, we are pleased to report no such disagreements arose during the course of our audit. That means you guys get along, which is fantastic. It's not a reflection necessarily on the auditors. It's the position of our town that you're willing to work with because there's nothing to hide, as in the old days. The other one, the other one that I always like to read is difficulties encountered while performing the audit. We encountered no difficulties in dealing with management and performing and completing our audit. I mean, those are the two things to say. Everything else in here is valid. You guys were forthcoming. You were transparent, as you always are. Marty, I got to compliment you. And I got to compliment the town administrator and staff because we have come a long way. I've only seen it better and better. You've done an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That concludes public comment. On to board reports.
Board reports will be next. Any board members here that's going to report?
I think you're going to approve two things from the Parks Board. Additions to the membership and also on the rules and regulations on the facility out there in Rolling Oaks. And also, they're going to have an Easter egg hunt and a brunch out there this weekend. And I think it's open to everybody. In fact, the way the signs are, you might see people from Weston and Pines. Anyway, everybody should come out and enjoy it. Rolling Oaks is sponsoring it. They do it every year. Thank you.
Any more board reports? That's finished with the board reports. Enough of the council comments. Do you want to lead off, Steve?
Sure. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just have one comment. We had talked, Freddie, you had brought to us the report from NPO on the plans for 2040. And we had sent them a note to make some corrections on it. But when we got the reply, there was still an issue on there, and I just wanted to bring that up here because I'd like to get, kind of bring this to the council, make sure that we can be in agreement on this. But one of the things that's still on there is a, as it reads on here, Southwest 188th Ave, a new two-lane road from 63rd Street to Sheridan Street. So basically, what that would do is create a new through street in Southwest Ranches 188th. So I don't know how it got on the list. It's got no business being on the list. We are looking at doing a, it would be about at 188th to come off of Sheridan to allow that traffic to go south to Sheridan, but not all the way up to 63rd where it would create a through street. So I wanted to bring that up and make sure that we were, we could, as a group, object to that.
Let me join you on that, Steve. I think we had to get a resolution together related to that.
Steve, I brought it up at the meeting because I was dumbfounded when I read it. And they claim it came from Wexley, our county commissioner. It came from the county commissioner, and she's our county commissioner. But it was brought from the board by Broward County Commissioner. So it's something we may want to follow up and find out.
I think we, yeah, we definitely want to get a resolution.
I was dumbfounded. I asked them, where did it come from? And they said it come from Broward County Commission.
Okay. So maybe, maybe we can follow up on the commission, see if we can narrow that down. But in the meantime, if we're all in agreement to have a resolution before the council to, to, yeah, indicate that we're not, we're against that.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're next.
Okay, a couple of things. I went to Tallahassee yesterday for the day. I was able to meet up with Evangeline Jean, and then I was able to meet with Richard Stark. And I was able to meet up with Hazel Rogers, visit with them all for about 15 or 20 minutes, thanked them for all their help that they've given us and any help they can give us in the future was greatly appreciated. Broward Days had an okay appearance up there. Nobody went last year. Broward Days didn't do it last year. But, so they had a okay turnout and things were all right. So anyhow, hopefully we'll get some more results this year like we did last year. So all's good.
Thanks for going, Jeff.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Vice Mayor. How you doing, Mayor?
Always a pleasure to hear you there, Gary. I wish I was there to see you.
Thank you. I got a few comments, PSA of nature, and some, one thing I want to talk about. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming. This would be a public service announcement. Rolling Oaks Civic Association is having their annual egg hunt this Saturday at the Rolling Oaks Park. At noon is when the egg hunt starts, but brunch is being served at 11:00. And I encourage everybody to take home the plastic eggs so I don't have to trip over them in my living room anymore. So don't give them back. We're going to have hazmat at the park on April 11th, Saturday, at the Rolling Oaks Park from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So if you've got any old paint, electronics, things of that nature, that would be a good time to put them and bring them out there. And it's very easy. You don't get out of your vehicle. Plus, we have a new, it's not new, but new to a lot of people where they'll shred a lot of your documents, which is really good. And you can watch them shred it right there, and they shred a lot. So, I mean, it takes, it's not one guy, one page. It's a whole box at a shot. The Education Advisory Board is going to have their annual scholarship food truck event at the Sunshine Ranches Equestrian Park on Saturday, May 30th, from 4:08. Should be a lot of fun. It always is. There's usually a silent auction, a Chinese auction for the kids. And everybody has a lot of fun with DJs and whatnot. And I mentioned this last night at the Sunshine Ranches Homeowners Association. There's going to be a lot of tree trimming going on on Griffin Road and Hancock, all along the east section of Griffin Road. And Hancock as far south as Sterling by the FPL licensed contractor. So it's just a FYI at this point. The main thing I wanted to talk about was, last meeting, we passed a resolution for a safety grant. And I have a lot of questions that were, are not answered in the contents of the grant documents. And I asked Andy one or two, and he wasn't quite sure on that. So I decided to start making a list, and I'm bringing it back to the council now if we can possibly get them answered as we move forward with this. One is, is the grant annual? It doesn't specify. Or is it a one-time only? Is it going to be voted on every year in a budget process? Or is it something that's, for the next 10 years, we're going to do that? The other thing is, if it's annual, how's it to be funded? Does it just come out of our general budget? Or does it come, only in the years we have a surplus? Or, you know, I mean, what kind of criteria is being used for that? In the overview upfront, in the details, it shows that the funds are being paid upfront. But in the details, as you go further back, the HOA has to be reimbursed. In other words, they have to expend all expenditures upfront. I'm just reading from the applications right here that we passed. It was passed last meeting. And they have to put everything upfront and then get reimbursed by the town after it's been completed. And it says that specifically, and it says completed to the satisfaction of town staff. And the grant specifically also does not cover any project soft costs. Engineering permits, supervision, whatever may be required if footers are being poured, or whatever the project details on that. And I think that needs to be answered in greater detail. Another question I have is, the safety grant must constitute a public purpose. And I'd like to see public purpose defined, if that's possible. And if it isn't, it isn't. But I'd like to see the definition for that. Also, too, is how many projects can an HOA submit for? If there may be multiple people, Rolling Oaks may want to submit for two or three of them. Sunshine Ranches may want to submit for two or three of them, you know. It may be low cost, big cost, high cost, whatever. But, which further leads to, who judges the grant projects if there's multiple entries? And how are the grant projects going to be judged? Is it by us, by simple vote majority, or is it, you know, we pick numbers out of a hat? I mean, you know, there's no definition on how that's supposed to go forward. There's, those kind of questions are not answered at all. And I realize this may be a work in progress, but those are pretty, I feel, pretty important questions. I mean, we are talking a max of $40,000. I mean, that's a lot of money. And if the funds are upfront, and, you know, this can be tweaked, you know, what are the payments going to be based on? Are they going to be based on progress reports or invoices or, you know, what have you? So those kind of questions, you know, I feel are, there's a lot more questions than there are answers out there with this. And I want to get them out now because I don't want this to turn into some sort of a CRA fund that you read about in, you know, five years from now, or two years from now, or one year from now. I'd rather, I'd rather we answer these, you know, in a logical, intelligent manner. And I'll close with that for right now. And I'll close with that for right now, before I start coughing.
Okay. Then Jeff, you wanna go, or you want me to go first?
No, just real quick, Freddie. A lot of good points Gary brings up, and those are things that'll need to be clarified and answered moving forward. I think we're all on board with regards to that. Wanna thank Doug for going to Tallahassee. I'm sure you did an outstanding job representing our interests. Thank you, Doug, for taking the time to do that. And I also wanna thank the Vice Mayor and the council for allowing me to spend time with my family this week during spring break. It's been wonderful. It's been fantastic. Anytime you have an opportunity to get away with your family, it's a special time. So I thank you all for allowing me to do that.
That it, Jeff?
That's it, Freddie.
All right, I'm left. Gary, what I'll do, being as I was on a yes vote, I'll recall it for you, and we'll bring it back, and let's see. I had some questions on it myself. So Keith, if you would, recall that.
What you would do, and I guess this could be appropriate time, if that's what you wanna do, you would have to do a motion for reconsideration?
Well, I think it's my turn now. Everybody else has had my turn, so it's my turn.
Yeah.
So I need to, I would like to forward that, ask for a resolution to bring it back.
No, no. You make a motion for reconsideration now.
Make a motion. I would like to make that motion to bring it back.
It can be seconded by anyone.
I'll second it.
Okay. Then the motion for reconsideration is voted upon, and then the item is brought back now.
You gonna bring it back now?
Yeah, we gotta vote, we gotta vote on it.
I'm sorry, Keith. Are we gonna bring it back at the next meeting or tonight?
No, you have to bring it back at this meeting. Now, you choose to read it into the record.
Then we need to call for the vote right now, then, right?
You're calling for a vote now in your motion for reconsideration. That means that at that point, we have to then do a motion to add the item to the agenda. We'll put it on the last item of the agenda. Russ will have to reprint it out, and if you haven't already, and get it for everyone. And then that item will be re-debated at the last item on the agenda.
Does he have to read anything back, or just, can we call the motion as it is?
No, the motion is for reconsideration of the public safety grant. And if that passes, then it gets put on this agenda as item number, well, we'd have to amend it. But really, we'll make it 15, and then determine will be 60.
I shall make a motion to recall it.
I second it.
Can I, can I just interject real quickly?
We can't hear ya, Jeff.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, a little better.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
And I heard the motion for reconsideration on. So I don't have any problems saying yes to it, because, you know, Gary brings up some important points and things that we need to consider. But I also heard Keith say that if we're gonna reconsider it tonight, that it goes all the way to the end of the agenda. We have to debate it, discuss it tonight. And all I'm asking is that we do the motion for reconsideration, you know, two weeks from now, when I'm back in the present, so that I'm there. It's just a whole different perspective, obviously, being at the present of the meeting as opposed to being on the, being on the phone and part of the, and part of the meeting.
How do we do that, Keith?
The item comes back up for discussion. Then if a council member wishes to table the item, the council member may do so upon a vote of the council. But regardless, it's required to come back on the agenda.
Did you hear that, Mayor?
Yeah, we gotta vote on it.
I got half of, I got, I got half of, I got half of it.
Basically, what Keith said, that we gotta add it to the back of the agenda tonight. And we can table it after it comes up for the next meeting, but it has to be added to the back of the agenda.
Well, Keith, don't we have to vote on that right now? That we haven't voted on it yet?
Yep.
That's okay, I don't have a problem with that. I just hope that we can table it for the next meeting so that I can be present. It's a much different perspective via appearing at the meeting via the phone as opposed to being there.
So we wanna call for the vote?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Okay, it's passed. All right. Our next, anybody else, any council comment? I only got one quick comment.
I could add one other thing, Freddie, if I may. I did meet with FDOT also while I was up there. I went over there and talked to them about that parking ride and the exit ramps and stuff. So we're sending them the resolution the town of Southwest Ranches made, and the one that Davy made, to just reaffirm to them that we have no interest in having that parking ride. And to try to eliminate the other traffic light they're trying to put up on the east side of 75 right there, 'cause they wanna change the way the exits are. So you come to a traffic light, make a left or a right on this side, which is crazy. So we may have to modify our resolution to include that, the change of the exit ramps and the traffic light. So that's something else I did yesterday also.
All right, I only got one comment, and I'll be through December. I wanna thank you. Griffin Road looks 100% better. They're trimming everything, and it really looks good. Thank you. Legal comment.
I'm sorry. All right. Tonight, I was going to go through the 2014 Inspector General Report, but in deference to the mayor not being here, he wanted to be here to see everyone's reaction. I'll, I agreed to wait until next week for that. Tomorrow is a very interesting motion in the Pine CCA case, Pine Southwest Ranches case. I invite everyone who wants to come to come. It will be educational. It's at 2:00 PM at the main courthouse, 201 Southeast 6th Street, Room 1070. It's cross motions of summary judgment by both Southwest Ranches and Pines. I personally have reviewed this now all week and last week, and I honestly believe that the judge is gonna deny both motions and that it will go to a jury rather than the judge for numerous reasons. But to make the argument simple for those of you who can't make it, the town of Southwest Ranches filed its motion against Pines, claiming that Pines breached its agreement by failing to provide water and sewer services to the CCA facility. That is our simple motion for summary judgment. We did not file a motion to summary judgment on the interference provision, because that's a matter of fact that needs to be tried. So we only filed it on one of the two contracts, because the other contract is not as clear-cut. It's not a matter of law on the other contract. Pines, in response, filed a motion for summary judgment. And in it, it said that our contract with them, they should get summary judgment, because by them entering in the contract was an ultra-virus act. That means that Pines has taken the position that they shouldn't have entered into the contract, that it was illegal. And they said that both contracts were illegal and that they, under the law, could not have entered into either of the contracts, because the contract binds future commissions. We've done extensive case law research, and quite frankly, their argument is preposterous. And if that was the case, then any contract that any municipality would ever enter into with anyone would be deemed illegal, because, you know, every contract binds future commissions, whether you like it or not. Strangely, while there is very good case law on this topic in our favor, there's not that much, because who, who in their right mind would take the position that a contract that they entered into followed to a T for years and years is illegal all of a sudden? So those are the two basic arguments that you'll hear. Pines has also, just for our purposes, have stated that they never breached the agreement, because CCA didn't give them all the materials that they asked for relating to the water and sewer services. Of course, CCA said, "We gave them everything we asked for." And finally, they claim that they never breached either agreement, because they terminated the fire agreement before they could've ever breached it. It's not accurate time-wise or otherwise. So it will be interesting, though. It's two hours long, so it's a pretty lengthy process, and we're well-prepared. And it's gonna be very legal, and it'll be interesting to watch. But in the end, my guess is that both will be denied. Moving forward on other issues, Bob, you mentioned about the CAFR and the fact that you wanted to speak. The reality is, is because you were denied, you got three minutes instead of two. So, you know, so you got an extra minute to speak about the topic. So that was good news for you. I wanna bring something up, because I heard it through the grapevine. Well, let me, before I do that, you mentioned Tisdore. I know Councilmember Bright Cruz has been on us constantly about Tisdore. We're now through 2017 with no problems. Next week, we're starting to go through 2018. So right now, we know that we can complete the projects on the project list through 2017 without any issues. So that's good news for the next two years for the town. Finally, I wanna bring up an issue that came up in the comp plan meeting about farms, because I've been asked this. And the reason why I'm even bringing this up tonight is because another farm bill is going through Tallahassee yet again. The new farm bill that's going through Tallahassee is a little bit scary for Southwest Ranches, because they put a provision in there that farms don't have to pay special assessments. Now, what the legislature doesn't understand is that Southwest Ranches special assesses fire, for special assesses waste, you know? And those would be a lot of money, as it relates to the town, if anyone who was quote-unquote "a farm" didn't have to pay their fire fee and waste fee. So we're working with the Florida Legislature to let them understand that a special assessment from a special district is different than a special assessment from a general municipality, because if, if, if they didn't have to pay special assessments, everyone else would have to pay their share. And the fire fees in this town would really be astronomical if you started looking through it. So as it relates to that, we're also working with the legislature about trying to fix the loophole that occurred when they changed the law as it relates to farms and all the structures that were built under the prior code. So we're trying to address both issues at that same time. I don't know if it's gonna get any traction or pass at all. Last year, it got killed immediately, but we're still gonna try to submit language to fix it. But that being said, I wanna bring up another issue that was raised at comp plan, because I think it's very important for everyone to understand. A municipality has no liability at all, unless it knows of a violation. Let me explain this. If there's a pothole in a road, and someone hits the pothole, and it wrecks their vehicle, the municipality has zero liability unless one thing occurs. And that thing is, and Emily knows this well, if they have previously contacted the town and told the town, "There's a pothole on this road, you must fix it." Once the town is aware of a known defect or a known issue, once they're placed on formal notice, then the town has the liability to correct the problem. So when the town and the comp plan board, and this hasn't come before the commission yet, but I have to explain legally what's going on, thought that they were trying to help residents out. And the thought was, they would help residents out by grandfathering in their structures that were, violated the zoning code, but were built prior to 2013, if they were agricultural structures. So if you had a barn, and prior to 2013, you didn't need city approval, municipal approval, to get that barn approved, and you put it in the setback, the thought was, it's a good thought, when you think about it, the good thought was that we could grandfather them in and say, "Okay, you built it under the old law. There's no problem as it relates to zoning." The problem comes, under the law, is the Florida Legislature still requires agricultural structures on non-tax-exempt farm properties to follow the Florida Building Code. So that being said, if the town is placed on notice that a structure was built illegally in the setback, that person is essentially putting the town on notice that their structure was built without permits, and then the town assumes all of the liability for that structure being built without permits. That means if that structure collapses, and a horse gets injured, a person gets injured, or that structure blows down in a hurricane and it hits someone else's home, or something like that, the liability as a result of the fact that the town is now on notice is exactly as that of a pothole. It transfers directly to the municipality. So what we were trying to do when looking at the farm issue is trying to say, "Okay, listen. We understand that a lot of structures here were built without permits, you know, during the day and age when they didn't have to have permits. But we have to figure out a way to, at some point, start getting them permitted to relieve the town of some municipal liability." I think Katam's office and our building official came up with, "Well, let's give them a couple of years, or when the property sells, or something, let's start, you know, transferring them in slowly so that eventually, all of them will have permits." We spoke about having a structural engineer go out there and not make it as formal, but have a structural engineer go out and inspect the structures, and then them getting permits that way. You know, we've been trying to figure out many different ways to get this resolved. I can only tell you what the municipal liability is. If the municipality and you as a commissioner or the comp plan board wants to do something that, you know, you want to do as a policy, I can only tell you your liability. If you, you know, it's up to you all as a commission to determine how much of that liability, the risk, that you wanna assume as a result of that. So even when we came up with the revisions, which was drafted by Katam's office, it was not drafted directly by me, when they came up with the standard of when a barn would have to get permits by, I know that that still had some liability, but we were lessening it to try to get them in slowly to relieve the municipality of a catastrophic event, like a hurricane or something like that, when we could be in serious danger. So we're still looking into this issue. I just want you all to know the pros and cons. It's not up to me to decide. I know what the law is. It's gonna be up to you all to make the decision as to how much risk you wanna take as it relates to this. So I heard at one point that the comp plan board wanted me to attend a meeting. There's no reason for me to attend a meeting, and I'll state that 100 times, because I'm not the one who's ultimately making a decision on the amount of risk that the municipality wants to assume. I can only tell you what that risk is, and then you all have to make a decision after that. So hopefully, that clarifies a little bit what the law is on that. And one other thing that I just wanna mention on this issue, I suggested a, an alternative approach earlier this week that I asked Jeff Katams, and I copied Andy on it, to bat around. And that was basically is, you know, what we, what we don't see and know, we don't really care about. And if someone gets caught, they may have to come in for a free variance to the town council. And if they're required to do that, then they would go through the eventual process of figuring out how to grandfather them in. So, you know, I just wanna throw that out there, because this eventually is a full policy decision. It's not a legal one, and I just wanna make that absolutely clear to everyone. Other than that, there might be some questions on this. I see Councilmember Bright Cruz. But other than that, there's no further legal comment.
Any questions for Keith?
Yeah. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Keith. I appreciate that, kind of that overview. You know, this is being the council liaison on the comp plan board. I've heard a lot of these debates and discussions going back and forth. And I'll be honest with you, even sitting there and listening to this go on for quite some time, it's a complex issue, and it's not an easy issue to really understand all the elements of it. The buildings that were already built, when they were built, what the liabilities are, whether it's the ones that are here today versus the ones, the properties that are sold in the future. There's just a lot of different pieces to it. And then the whole thing of trying to ease this for our residents as much as we can, but as what Keith is saying, the liability that we may be taking on. I really feel like we need to have a workshop either on our council night or on the comp plan night where we have everybody in one room, and we spend a few hours going over different alternatives. You know, Doug just had an interesting thought. I'll let him present it if he wants to. But, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of different ways to look at this, and I think it's something that is critical to our town, and we really need to brainstorm a little bit about it when we've got everybody in the same room at the same time and can just throw out ideas and see if we can formulate a way forward.
Totally agree.
Let me jump in if I may. The liability, obviously, for us is a big problem. So, I don't know in turn whether you're grandfathered or not grandfathered. I'm on board with what Steve said, with having some kind of meeting and getting together and brainstorming. Let's throw some stuff around and see what you can make when we throw that stuff at you to what you come up with. But my, you know, I would think you're, you and your firm would be able to come up with some kind of waiver to protect the town that if there's something we do know about or brings brought to our attention, for somebody to want to keep it or be able to keep it, if it's within the allowance that it can be to, for them to sign a waiver for that particular structure, that the town's not liable if something were to happen. So, I don't know if something like that could be created or whatever, but...
We've looked at it. I mean, we can get into this in the workshop, but municipality is not allowed to transfer its sovereign immunity rights, so there are very difficult provisions about that. It wouldn't really be a waiver. What you're referring to is essentially a hold harmless agreement and that they would indemnify the municipality if anyone or anything got hurt as a result of their unlawfully-built structure. The question will always be whether or not that will stand up in court, and that's going to be the eventual question. So, as long as you all know the issues, that's all I care about, and that's what I want to make clear. You know, I want you to know where the pitfalls are, and then you've got to make the decision after that as to how much of that you want to be at risk for the town.
I think they're more landmines than pitfalls.
Yeah. But I agree. I think it's incredibly necessary to have a joint meeting, as Councilmember Bright Cruz said, because one board cannot dictate this to you all because it infects the entire future of the municipality.
Good. Thank you. I'm sitting right next to Andy, so I got to hear his comment, but it sounds like he's going to help organize and put this together maybe on a comp plan night.
Actually, the comment I had was the night of the next Comprehensive Plan Advisory Board meeting might be the ideal time to have this workshop with the board and the council if that all, if that works for all of you. That would be the in-between week in April?
In here.
Yeah, yeah, because we may very well have members of the public who'll be concerned will want to be here. So, we'll certainly need the space in here.
How do you feel? Gary?
I'm all right.
You okay with it?
I'm okay with it, so that's all.
Jeff, you understand where we're at?
What date is that?
Yeah, no, I understand. I don't have a problem with that either, but maybe on something with Doug's waiver process or transferring the liability, although Keith kind of clarified that, that maybe that's not something that the town can do. But, but on to something anyway. No, I have no problem with an April meeting.
Okay. You know where we're going, Andy?
I'm not sure where the final destination will be, but I know we're starting.
Keith, you got any more comments?
No, that's it.
Administrator comments?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a few things very briefly. One is I'm just pleased to give you an update on Country Estates Park and let you know that under one of our Parks for People grants, the town received reimbursement today of $72,000. So, that hit our bank today. So, you know, we've gotten our grant requirements done on that. We've been funded back from county on that. And the bid, the RFP, for demucking and doing trails around the perimeter and a couple of the trails through there, that is currently out right now. So, we're looking forward to getting some bids on that, and the vast majority of that work is also going to be grant-funded. There was a question earlier about the assault rifles that were purchased a few years ago. I'm very pleased to let you know because I was, I was very involved in this. We did get those rifles back from BSO. They went to Davie, they were inventoried, they tested them out in their range, and they've been brought back to this building, and they're secured in the gun safe here in our building. And last but not least, I do want to thank Marty Sherwood. You know, we had a lot of comments in the beginning. Council made some comments about the CAFER. Well, it's certainly a total staff effort, and the entire staff plays a role in that. Marty's leadership, you know, on those issues, on those financial issues is second to none. Somebody told me a long time ago when I got into this business that there is nothing that will sink a city manager or a town administrator quicker than a bad financial administrator, and that's true. And I consider myself very lucky to have Marty as my partner in that end of this business. So, thank you, Marty.
Did Andy have a comment?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Then that'll move us into nine, which is a resolution. Russell, you want to read the resolution, please?
It's a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, establishing usage policies for the Rolling Oaks Park, governing rental use of the meeting and community rooms, establishing a fee schedule, and providing an effective date.
Andy, do you want to speak on it?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm sorry. This is the, I'll say now, updated rules for the Rolling Oaks Barn Rental. This came to council previously. Council, there were some questions that were raised. It was kicked back to the Parks Advisory Board. They have revised it within your book. There are some very minor changes, but staff is recommending council acceptance of the terms as presented.
Okay. Open for public comment?
You've got to make a motion.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Second.
Okay. It's open for public. He's already read it.
I read it.
Go ahead, Paul.
I won't debate the fees. I think they're stiff for residents. I think they're a little light for non-residents. I think you tweak a little more. But one of the things that I wasn't clear in reading through the contract, the rental contract is, you know, I've seen the public places...
Bob, I'm sorry, you're loud, but you're not picking up your audio.
Can you hear me now? Thank you, Russell.
Just grab and hold it. It's not as tall as...
I'm not an entertainer. The question I have regarding the rental agreement, I didn't see it in here, is, I mean, I've been to parties when I was younger that people destroyed the place. I mean, they wrecked the toilet facility, et cetera. I was part of a fraternity, so I don't need to say anymore. No. TKE, one of the good ones. But anyway, you know, I don't see that the, in the agreement, that the leasur, the renter, would be held accountable for anything that exceeds their deposit. That's number one. The other thing that I would be putting in the rental agreement, since we are a municipality and we have the clout, that, you know, if there were laws broken, I mean, if somebody does, if somebody defaces the property, vandalism, that sort of thing, that ought to be spelled out in here that they'll be prosecuted, prosecuted to the full extent of the law, not just holding the renter responsible. So, I mean, let them know we're serious. Can't screw around with this place. It's beautiful, and we want to keep it that way. Thank you.
Any more public comment? Public comment's closed. Back to the council. Any more discussion from the council?
I'll just say, I think that Bob brought up some good points. I think that it might be rather than, rather than applying it specifically to this one, I think those are good comments that probably are more global, that should be applied and thought about for all of them. So, maybe that's really, you know, my inclination is to pass this the way it is, send those comments to the Parks Board that they may want to consider, and then bring it back. Maybe we can amend them all.
Good idea. You got any comments? Jeff, you got any comments?
No, I agree with Steve.
Okay, I got a couple questions. Like, for example, it says a resident. Now, if say, I'm going to use myself for example. I belong to Ducks on the Left, I'm a resident. Would they be entitled to a break, or is that just when a resident's personal thing? That would be my question, would be, when you say residence, what do you mean? Because, you know, we had a lot of people, now, like in my organization, probably 50% of people live in Southwest Ranches, but then are they covered? So, those things are, I think, need to be spelled out a little bit better, you know, when we say residence. How are we saying that?
May I answer, Vice Mayor? A resident who's doing a rental would be entitled to a 50% deposit over the advertised rate. So, if a resident is renting it to have a meeting there, he'd be entitled to that discount.
I would think one of the things, I don't know if it's spelled out there, is, say, we've got one resident in our town has a 501(c), you know, so are we going to give 501(c) a special? In other words, when you're giving a break, those type of people, when they come, they're representing an organization, that most of them are different reasons, you know.
It's Andy's call.
I'll say, going further, exceptions to the policy as it's here, the council and administration has the right, the opportunity to waive or revise those policies as needed. So, certainly, if there's an organization that council deemed worthy that wanted to be in there, you would certainly have that opportunity.
Okay. Y'all ready for a vote? Call the vote, please.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisickelli?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right. Second one would be number 10. Read the resolution, please, Russell.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving work proposals with Craig A. Smith and Associates for Engineering Services and Craven Thompson for Surveying Services for the Sterling Road guardrail improvements, authorizing the town administrator to execute the purchase order and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. It's open for public comment? Andy, you want Cleat to talk on this before we...
Well, I'll tell you what it is. Obviously, if council has any questions for Cleat, that's certainly no problem. But if you recall, in the state budget last year, we got some funding to go ahead with guardrails along Sterling Road. This is just one step in that process for surveying and engineering work in order for us to complete. We have till December of 2016 to complete the project, but I know the town staff is looking to have this project completed by December of 2015. And if there's any additional questions, I know Cleat is here and certainly more than up to speed if you have anything for him.
Anybody got any questions for Cleat? He's right here in the audience. All right. Did I call for public comment on this?
You did.
Did?
You did.
Okay. Ready for, call the question.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisickelli?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, number 11. Read the resolution, Russell, please.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving work proposals with Craig A. Smith and Associates for Engineering Services and Craven Thompson for Surveying Services for the Southwest 190th Avenue Extension roadway improvements, authorizing the town administrator to execute the purchase order and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second. Open public comment? No public comment? Any more question from the council? Call the question, please.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisickelli?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Keith, do we have to do that item now?
Yep.
No, no, 12 first, then 13, then the new item.
You want to do it after 13?
Yes.
Okay. We got number 12, appointments to Recreation Forest Natural Services Advisory Board. Andy, you or Gabe are going to handle that?
I was going to ask H. Chapels as the Parks Board Chair to handle this, if she's ready.
I would just request again that you approve these nominations.
I got one more comment.
And you have one? Thank you so much, Steve.
Well, I will have it. I don't have it tonight, but I will have it.
So, at the next meeting, we can, can I ask you to please ask them to come to the next meeting, which will be in two weeks? Because they won't be appointed until...
The next week.
Afterwards, I guess. Okay.
If I may, Vice Mayor, the names that I know Ms. Chapels is asking you all to appoint tonight would be, in Councilmember McKay's district would be Lana Eichel, and there's an application from her in your books. In the Vice Mayor's district, we're looking to appoint Rose Albritton and Debbie Mantell. Rose Albritton already serves on the Public Art Board, so this would be her second board. Within Councilmember Jablonsky's, we're full at four, so there's no new additions. And in Councilmember Bright Cruz's district, we have John Herring, who's currently on the board, Nancy Hartman, who's applied and is here with us this evening. And Councilmember Bright Cruz has indicated he will come back to this council to appoint one more person, which will give us good geographical, I'll say, evens out the board.
Good balance for each district, and I hope that, you know, we'll continue to keep that kind of balance. Thank you very much.
No.
No, it's just an announcement. The way that you all approved your recent policy is that it would just be announced on the record, who the appointments are. So, next meeting, Councilmember Bright Cruz's, a person he selects just has to be announced. That's the...
In other words, do we have to vote on her?
No. We're not required to vote on it. We can just, they're on. Just bring up here, we tell you, and we add them.
For anyone who's looking lost, the council was tired of constantly approving resolutions, replacing and adding board members. So, earlier this year, they passed a resolution and say they just have to announce publicly who their appointment is, and that's their appointment, so that we didn't have to keep having resolutions every time.
Okay. So, that moves us into 13 approval and amendments of February 26, 2015, regular council meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any public comment? Call the question.
I actually, I actually do have an amendment to those meetings.
I'm sorry.
Just on my comments there, I just wanted to clarify that there's two comments there. One was I spoke about the benefits of having a station there between 190th and 210, and then I also spoke about the benefits of having it broad wing. And the difference between those two was that the, between 190th and 210, that's a long-range timeframe, and broad wing would be the short-term timeframe. So, I just wanted that included in those comments because it's critical to understand what my comment was.
So, who made the motion of approval?
Yeah, amended to reflect.
You want to accept it as amended?
Yeah.
I'll second the amendment.
All right. Call the question, please.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisickelli?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Russell, if you could please read into the agenda added item 14.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, expressing the council's desire to establish the Town of Southwest Ranches Neighborhood Safety Grant Program for fiscal year 2014 through 2015, providing for application requirements, approving an additional 2014-15 expense not to exceed $40,000 for promotion of safe neighborhoods, approving a fiscal year 2014-15 budgetary appropriation from the General Fund, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Vice Mayor, this is the item now that's come back for reconsideration, that the mayor made an inopportune motion. So, I'll just remind you what his motion was because it should be now, to table this item until April 9 at 7:00 p.m.
Okay, so do we need public comment on his motion?
There's not a motion, there's not comment ever on a table link. Mayor, is that still your motion?
Yes, it is still my motion. You just get a whole different perspective of it, obviously, by phone, and I'd certainly like to be there. It's an important item.
I'll second his motion.
All right, do we have to vote on it?
Yeah, that, there's not supposed to be debate, but...
Yeah, I was trying to get a little debate in before we seconded it, but let me just, let me just, you know, in the tradition of Southwest Ranches, let me just break Robert's rules here. My only question is, Councilman Jablonsky brought up a lot of good questions. I'm wondering if we need a little bit more time to get the answers to those or work through some options. And so, if it makes sense, rather than doing it the next meeting to have one or two meetings...
I don't know that we set a date and time for it.
There was.
Oh, we do have to?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I agree with Steve to give it a little more time.